Good evening. We call the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July 6, 2022, to order. And we'll start with Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. The agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law, and we have one member absent, and that is Member Tom Marvin. All other members are present.
Thank you very much. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all.
Thank you. So, as the...
Pull your mic down towards you. I'm getting feedback. Pull your mic down towards you. Thank you.
How's that gonna do? Does that sound better?
No. Okay, good.
How about that?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So, next order is a public comment period, and this is a general public comment period. If anyone in the audience or watching at home has a comment on any item on the agenda, you have this kind of early opportunity to provide comment. Now, I would say everything else, everything on the agenda is a public hearing, and so we will have an opportunity kind of at the start of each of the agenda items tonight if you'd rather wait till, wait until that agenda item comes forward. But at this point, I do open it up to public comment. Seeing nobody... Thank you, sir. Please, yes, please. And please state your name.
Yeah, Nick Macey, no stranger to Boulder City. I lived here from '09 to '18. Went to Florida, got my knee replaced, came back, forever home, is now in Eldorado Estates, which I received the invitation to make a public statement regarding the application for conditional use and permit and variance. I'd like to hear the proceedings. But of particular note, I must say that at first I was against the proceedings of enabling the property to expand the parking and all of that. But as you read further on, it says that because it will be a funeral parlor, and I thought that might be a negative because I'm always hearing ambulances going up and down Elm Street and Buchanan. And I'm a senior and a super senior, matter of fact, super meaning over 80, but that doesn't give me any privilege to do anything but stand up here and talk freely. So, in this notice, public notice, it says that there won't be any funerals. I expected that there'd be a lineup of cars, and you won't be able to go to Albertson's. That's just a comment. But there won't be any funerals. Well, that's a plus. The other thing, if it's not a funeral parlor, I'm proposing at a particular point in time, I'll come back and talk after I hear everybody else, including Tyson. Is Tyson here?
He is.
I don't notice him?
Oh, he's, he doesn't sit on the Planning Commission. He's, he's the applicant, and he's in the audience with you.
No. Hey, hi, Tyson. I said hello coming in. But he's a long-term resident, as I understand, and so if it's not a funeral parlor, then my observation, it, it, it'll probably be a mausoleum. And I used to bank at the Bank of America in the vaults that are there to the left, I believe, where there are vaults already. It's convenient to Mr. Tyson, Mr. Smith's property and business right across the street. So, I just thought I'd start the forum off by making some observations about the public notice. Thank you very much.
Seeing no other comments from the group here, we open it up to the group that may be watching online or streaming online. And if you would like to make a comment at this early opportunity, please call in at And there is a bit of a delay, so we'll wait 30 seconds to resume. Hearing no other comments, let's move on to the first order of business on the agenda. And this is approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting, June 15. And I would open it to the group. Is there any changes?
I don't have any issues. If there are no other comments, I'll move approval.
All second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Excuse me. That moves us to our second item of business. And this is relating to Tyson Smith at 900 Nevada Way, and this matters pertaining to property in the C2 general commercial zone. We'll start out, this will start out with a public hearing, and then we have, we have three items here. This is a public hearing, and then a application for conditional use permit to allow funeral home pursuant to 11114 of the city code. And then lastly, an application for variance to permit a funeral home with 16 parking spaces, whereas Section 11232D of the code requires a minimum of 28 parking spaces. And what we're going to do is we'll hear a staff report that covers both items. We'll have a public comment period on both items, and then we'll discuss, have motions, and vote on items B and C separately. So, Susan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noted, I'm gonna, because the conditional use permit request and variance are tightly related, I'm gonna basically summarize them together. As the first report, and actually both reports note, the applicant currently has a conditional use permit for a funeral home across the street at 833 Nevada Way in Suite 1, which is a space that he leases. He purchased the subject property at 900 Nevada Way in 2017 and currently operates a soda shop in the building, and now he plans to convert this space for additional funeral home use. And per the applicant's information, the new location will just be used for meetings with clients, body preparation, and storage. There will be no funeral services, viewings, or celebrations of life conducted from this location, which is basically how the other location currently operates. For this property, the immediately adjacent land uses are commercial to the east, west, and south, and to the immediate north is an alley beyond which there are apartments. And given the limited nature of the proposed activities, the proposed use is not anticipated to have negative impacts on the surrounding properties. And according to our code enforcement officer, there have been no complaints regarding the existing funeral home operation across the street, which is also in a similar position. It's got commercial on three sides and a butts residential to the rear. The proposed remodel for the funeral home use will primarily be interior with some changes to the building facade to provide an overhead door on the side for delivery and access. Regarding parking, there are presently 16 spaces on site, including the required handicap space, but the code requires greater parking for funeral homes. Basically, it requires three times the amount of standard retail uses because the presumption is that there will be funeral services and viewings and activities that would draw large gatherings of people. But in this case, the applicant is not proposing that here. If the conditional use permit is approved, the resolution notes that approval of the parking variance is necessary in order for the use permit to become active. With regard to parking, the variance staff report covers, you know, the five criteria that must be considered in order for the Planning Commission to approve a variance. One of the key items is that it is necessary, the requested variance is necessary to enjoy a substantial property right or the already enjoyed by other properties in the same vicinity or zone. There's only one other funeral home in the city, and that's the applicant's current location across the street. And it did not need a parking variance because there happens to be sufficient excess parking in that lot for the particular uses in that complex. But as the report notes, the majority of businesses in the city fall under the category of retail and office, which requires one-third the amount of parking as a funeral home. But there are other uses that also require greater parking than standard retail, and some of those uses include restaurants, cafes, bars, auto repair businesses, banks, motels, medical offices, and others. And except for our immediate downtown area, where businesses don't need parking on site because we've got public parking lots in the vicinity, for that stretch of Nevada Way that the applicant's two locations are on, there actually have been several other parking variances granted over the years, most often for restaurants, but in one case for a vet clinic. And so that summary is in, attached to the report. So, for the purposes of a conditional use permit, there's a resolution in the packet that if the commission finds in favor of this, it notes a number of standard conditions for the, you know, for conditional uses. For a variance, there are draft findings for approval at the end of the report with two conditions noted. Excuse me. Let's make sure I got that right. The first is that the variance is approved based, would be approved based on the plans and information submitted and discussed as part of the request. So, that means no funeral services because that's what's been provided. And following up, the second condition states funeral services shall not be conducted at the site, and funeral processions shall not occur to or from the site. Because obviously, without those activities, the need for excess parking is mitigated. And to that degree, staff actually could not find any justification to deny the variance request based on the criteria in the code. So, if the commission believes there will be a parking problem, you'll need to come up with a finding for denial based on the code criteria. And that concludes my summary, and I'll be happy to answer any questions of the commission to start.
I open it up to the commission. Does anyone have questions for Susan?
No.
Okay. Is the applicant present? And would you please step to the podium?
Tyson Smith, representing myself.
Very good. Is there anything you'd like to add before we start questioning?
No, I think Susan did a wonderful job.
Awesome. Just for my clarification, and maybe for anyone streaming, the services that you're off, that you will plan to offer at this, this proposed location mirror or are the same as the services currently offered at your current, or offered at your current location? Is that correct?
No. We're gonna completely eliminate all services at all inside our buildings.
Oh, so you currently have small services?
Small visitations after hours where we're not interrupting the tenants next to us, yes.
I see. And so you'll discontinue that and simply do arrangements, body preparation, and so on?
Yep, just as stated.
As stated, yeah. I think that's all the questions from me. I open it up to the commission?
None for me.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? All right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We now open the meeting for, this is a public hearing. And the public hearing will, as noted earlier, cover both the conditional use permit and the variance request for parking. And so if you have any comments to either of those items, please step forward, state your name for the record, and let her rip. Very good. Oops.
Hello?
Hello.
I'm Mrs. English. I live in Eldorado Mobile Home Park, and I'm not comfortable with mortuary going in to the nest. I, I have talked with my husband and other residents in the park, and mixing food and beverage with body preparation of a mortuary does not sound like a good mix to me.
I think we want to clarify, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention that in the summary, but the nest use is going away. So, he plans to convert the entire building to additional mortuary use. So, it will, there will be no mixing of, of the nest and a mortuary.
That's the first I've heard that be part of the... Okay, well, I have no objections to a mortuary then. There's not gonna be services there, right? So, the extra parking's not an issue?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad I made that comment so people watching and in the audience can know that as well.
Thank you for your, for your comment. Thank you, Susan, for the clarification. Would anyone else like to be heard on it? It looks like...
Actually, I've had two root beer floats there, and they're quite good. For $2, you got a very large one. But that being noted, that it'll be a singular use, the signage that comes up, I mean, there are a number of possibilities. If you read into the demographics of Boulder City, I think you'll find that most of the, the highest percentage is seniors, believe it or not, over 65 and over 55, the majority, over 50%. So, since there are no funeral services to be held there, I don't see a need for calling it a funeral home because that's not what it is. And mortuary, I've come up with the idea of it's a mausoleum because it'll be the storage of cremains. No cremains will be stored there?
No cremains.
Well, could you elaborate on what the use is going to be?
He will be doing preparation of bodies for burials and, for burials. He's not allowed to do cremations on site.
That's what we're doing with family.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. He said it's for visits with clients as well as body preparation for funerals. But bodies will not be permanently stored in, on the property.
Oh, wow. Be kind of convenient because of the bank vault there, but if that's not the case, what will it be called? The signage?
He hasn't proposed that yet.
Oh, okay. Well, any questions? Thank you.
I apologize. I should have asked you to state your name again for the record.
Yeah, Nick Macey, here, again, no stranger to Boulder City. Very proud to be here. And I was at the parade, and I'm very comfortable with the boos that were given to the governor. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Please step forward, state your name for the record.
Yes, my name's Jeff Buddy, and I'm not comfortable with it moving from where it's at. And the way is, when you drive down the street coming into Boulder City, you see all good things. You see CVS, you see the hotels, and then you see Fox's BBQ, and then you see other things. And all of a sudden, you see on the left-hand side Hearst sitting out front and like a funeral place. It's kind of like where it was before, it was kind of hidden behind the mortuary sign, the three signs that were there, where it was kind of like darkened on the, on that side over there where it wasn't more noticeable, as where now it will be really noticeable, like a little landmark or something like that, like Fox's and stuff like that. And I am, I know in the last couple nights, last four nights, we take walks at night during, during, like around nine o'clock at night, and I've noticed every time we walk up the street, we see these two Hearsts. And it's kind of like, you know, it just kind of gives you a sad feeling, not really a bad feeling, but a sad feeling. And it just kind of makes it where it should be, be heard but not seen. And that's where I'm kind of coming from on it. Thank you.
Before you step up, Madam Clerk, are members of the audience allowed to come up twice during the same public hearing? I, I'm sorry, we're only allowed to speak once on a...
I just wanted to agree with the gentleman. I just felt I didn't want to do more than that.
I think it's duly noted then. Thank you.
No.
Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Hearing none from the audience, let's turn it over to the group that may be streaming. Once again, if you're streaming, this is the opportunity to provide your comments to the second order of business tonight. Please call in to 702-589-9629. All right. Hearing no comments, we'll end the public comment period on this item and move it back to the Planning Commission for discussion and a possible motion. Would anyone like to start the ball rolling? Oh, Mr. De Teresa, please.
Yes, I just wanted to say that unfortunately, the line of business that Mr. Smith is in, for a lot of people, carries a negative stigma, connotation, whatever you want to call it. But, you know, his business provides a necessary service that unfortunately, everybody is gonna need at one point. And, yeah, and it's a benefit to the city, I think, to have a, a business like his operating. And that's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to, anyone have a discussion, thoughts on the matter, or a
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1214, which includes the findings and conditions for approval of VCU 22273, as staff has documented.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Our second motion.
She wins.
Okay. My mic's on the whole time anyways. I just turned it off.
Very good. We have a motion and a second, final opportunity for discussion here with the commission. And seeing no one jumping in, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Or any opposed? Very good. The motion passes, and that moves us to the variance request. So, this could be a second deliberation or a motion. So, the applicant, of course, has requested a variance to the parking requirements, and we have the opportunity to discuss. Does anyone have any comments regarding parking? I'll just make one comment, and I would say that given the simple fact that the applicant is not planning to have full funeral services, that, and I believe the staff report indicates that of the 16 parking spots, commonly closer to 10 would be in use, it seems like the variance request is, is reasonable. And with that, I would make a motion to...
No one has any comments?
Anyone else have comments?
I'll move approval of V22659, subject to findings contained on page three of staff report and the conditions contained on pages three and four.
I'll second it.
Very good. There you go. All right. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Were you going to have a public hearing? The second part is...
No, the, no, the public hearing was for both. So, the motion for conditional use permit and for a variance, both pass. Congratulations, Mr. Tyson. Thank you. That moves us on to the third order of business for possible action, and this is V22-660, applicant Stephanie Murphy, address 629 Northridge Drive. And this is a public hearing on an application for variance in the R18 single-family residential zone to permit additions, which have already been built, to a house with side and rear setbacks as close as zero feet, whereas Section 1135 of the city code requires additions to have a minimum interior setback of five feet and a minimum rear setback of 15 feet. Staff, do we have a report on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the commissioners will have to bear with me. I'm gonna try to slowly go through all the various structures on this property, which were built by prior property owners. The applicant and owners purchased this property just this year, and they were told that all of the structures on site had permits. of the structures onsite had permits, and they initially inquired about converting the existing block garage into livable space, and that triggered a zoning review and letting them know that, other than the home and the block garage, none of the other added structures had any permits in the file, and it was quite a challenge to try to determine how zoning applied to them. Yes. Oh, nope, Holly, if, yes, stick on this screen for a bit, I'm going to try to summarize going around the various structures that the site plan refers to. The shed, as depicted on the drawing, is now effectively attached to the home of the structure because of how it's attached to the other structures which are attached to the home. And because it's enclosed, this building needs a side setback variance. It just has a two-foot, one-inch setback to the interior side lot line, where five feet would be required. Now, the structure just below that, called a partial patio enclosure, technically, the posts are at a five-foot side setback, but the exterior wall, if you could call that, is really, is not a code-compliant structure. There's about a foot and a half of block at the bottom, and then a metal wall on top of that, and then some plastic sheeting on top of that to help filter the sun, and per the building official, that's not code compliant in any way, and it will have to come down. So basically, that mostly enclosed patio cover area will become more truly like a patio cover, but it will have the shed on one side and the garage on the other side, and the house on the third side. But it will be open in the end to the west, once the permits get approved. And then south of that, the existing block garage was originally built as a detached structure, but prior owners, and this drawing, unfortunately, it was sort of cobbled from what the assessor had, and it is by no means to scale. So there was probably originally a few feet separation between the dome house and the block garage, but it's sort of been filled in there at this point. And that garage has setbacks to the side and rear property lines, which was fine when it was a detached garage. All the residential properties in town, you can have a detached shed or garage in your backyard, and it can have zero-foot side and rear setbacks if it meets firewall requirements, and it's behind your home. But once you attach structures to the home, then those are required to meet the same setbacks as the house. This is now attached, and we don't allow zero-foot setbacks, so that is the other part of this variance request, is basically to legalize that connection of the garage to the house. And the plans you've got in the file indicate that it's that building where the owners would like to convert it to livable space, with a music room and bathroom and an office, and, and that will be fine. One of the conditions proposed, if, should the variance be approved, is that there could be no bedrooms and no kitchen, nothing that is going to create additional livable space that is attached and yet not really part of the main home because of that wonky, sort of mostly enclosed patio cover connecting it to the home. Then attached to the block garage is a carport, and you've got photos in the packet for that. That's fine, it doesn't need a variance, you know, as is, because the setback to the rear property line is permitted for a structure that is open at the front and the rear, as that particular carport is. And then lastly, towards the side street is a metal garage, and that also complies with code. So again, apologies for the confusing nature of this, the applicant has done their best attempts at trying to provide setback and dimensional information, and to describe what they plan to do, you know, with all of these structures or what's there now. And so the staff report, you know, goes through the five criteria that the planning commission must find in favor of the request in order to approve the variance. If approved, there are two recommended conditions. The first is the standard condition, but it is important to note, because if you approve this request, it's based on the plans and information you're reviewing as part of this variance request. And the variance does not apply to changes to the plans if the scope of the variance is expanded beyond what you see before you in the submitted information. So if the variance gets approved, it doesn't give the applicant carte blanche to say, okay, great, we can just enclose everything now and have zero-foot setbacks wherever they want. It's like, no, this is based on the shed being a shed and the patio cover basically being a patio cover, which will end up being more open on the side than it is now. But the second condition notes, none of the structures other than the original home shall be used as or converted to a dwelling or rental unit, but it acknowledges that the block garage may be converted to livable space, including a bathroom, but not including bedrooms or a kitchen. And then if the commission is not in favor of this request, there are also a couple of findings that could be used to deny it as well.
Very good, Susan, thank you. Look at the planning commission, does anyone have any questions for Susan? Nature, you're tickling me here. Are you good? Okay. No questions for city staff at this point? All right. With that, is the applicant here? And would they please stand and, or she please stand and state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Murphy.
Hi, Stephanie.
Hi.
Thank you. Do you have anything that you'd like to add to the information Susan has provided?
No, I know it's a very confusing home. We were confused too before we saw it, and Susan did a wonderful job. You know, we just purchased, purchased it as is and, and have intentions of using the spaces for what, you know, Susan recommended.
All right. And you're okay with the conditions, I assume?
Yes.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant, part of this group?
Were any of the neighbors notified, or, or did we, is it something that, that they need to be notified of?
On the second page of the application, it notes that there were 99 properties within 500 feet, and 97 notices were sent.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I was just going to make a comment, anything you do to that house is going to be better for it.
It is a super cool house, and we're very excited to be there.
Where do we go from there? All right, this, lastly, any other comments, questions for the applicant? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You may sit down. This is a public hearing, and as such, I open it up to comments at this time, from anyone in the audience who would like to be heard on this matter. Seeing none at this time, let's go over to those who may be streaming, as before. If you have any comments to this matter, please call in to 702-589-9629, and we'll Hearing no comments, we'll close the public hearing on this matter and move it back to the planning commission for deliberation, discussion, and possible motion. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments they might like to share with the group?
Mr. Chairman, I think that this is a solution for the city to get the permits back in line, the owners get to get what they want done. I see it as a win-win. It's in the back of the house, nobody's going to see it anyways when they're driving by the way that house's orientation is, so I'm in favor of it.
Well, I would kind of mirror that sentiment as well. You know, and, and I think just to add to it, the structures have been there for many, many years. I walk my dog in the park every day, so be careful. And...
Notice the rottweiler's gone, it doesn't bark here anymore.
Yeah.
What's that?
The previous owners had a rottweiler that had been bitten by...
Oh, yes. So it hurt.
So, you know, we're really not talking about a change, other than simply to bring it into compliance through a variance that would allow the structures as they sit. That's just my comment. Any other thoughts on this matter, or a motion? Then I will take this opportunity to make a motion to approve variance request V22-660, with the findings and conditions provided by staff. So to be more specific, subjects, subject to the findings contained on page three of the staff report and the conditions, page, contained on page four. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Could be moving here a lot easier, thank you. You're awesome.
I know there was a lot of work for Susan to do all that.
Greatly appreciated, though, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Lastly, we'll move on to item number four, this is monthly, a monthly progress report on development allotments.
No comment.
Very good. And last item is a final public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience, both real and virtual, that would want to be heard on any subject discussed here tonight? Seeing no one in the audience, jumping to the podium, we'll move to the virtual audience. Hearing no comments, I'll bring this planning commission meeting of July 6, 2022, to a close.